Agenda, under the consent agenda, I'd like to add a couple of items. The first item be item H supplemental bill payment. And item I accept the resignation from Amy Norling, Norling, Community Development Administrator Assistant.
A second.
Hey, motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Mayor Voss, motion by Councilmember Harrington, second by Councilmember Urkel as amended. Uh, Councilmember Urkel.
I never go first with me.
Uh, Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazens.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. That motion passes. Uh, next item is presentee in public hearings, Jack.
Item four point oh, twenty twenty one preliminary budget. The city finance committee met with city staff on April twenty ninth, May fourteenth, and June twenty ninth to review and discuss the twenty twenty one budget inputs and assumptions. The finance committee also discussed the city general fund balance, the city financial performance for the past two years, and the city's overall debt service requirements. After the initial finance committee meeting, the base budget was submitted to department heads for the preparation of their individual department budgets. The city council also held two different work sessions in order to discuss the twenty twenty one preliminary budget. Based on inputs from both the finance committee, department heads, and the city council, the overall twenty twenty one preliminary general fund expenditure budget is projected to increase by five percent or two hundred and seventy three thousand seven hundred dollars. This expenditure would end result in a corresponding levy increase, levy increase of two point two percent or a hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred dollars in order to balance the twenty twenty one budget. The twenty twenty one budget model currently reflects certain inputs which are the primary drivers for the overall projected increase in the levy shown in the plaque. At this time, staff requests council consider approval of resolution twenty twenty dash forty six, setting the final levy and budget date.
There a motion on it, resolution?
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion?
So with COVID on, I am wondering if we can propose to freeze this budget and just continue with the twenty twenty budget? I can't in good conscience with COVID, um, vote for an increase on any kind of a levy right now. Um, people are out of work, businesses are barely operating, every penny is needed. And I'm just wondering if there's a way we can delay this until people get their lives back to normal. Um, I think we have to let people reduce their debts and just get back on their feet. I just feel so bad for so many people and I just can't in good conscience, um, vote to proceed with this. Uh, I know, I think it's a good budget, but I just think right now is not the time. So that's my feeling, I don't know if it's possible, but I just thought I'd.
Su- Suzanne, uh, this is the preliminary budget. What is voted on tonight can be changed prior to the December final budget hearing. We can make reductions in this budget prior to that December date, but we cannot make any additions to it.
I thi- I think what Jack is suggesting is we've been working on this budget for a few months. And, um, go all aside, uh, the night where we almost need to pass this on. Um, it'd be difficult to make any kinds of changes that you're suggesting. As Jack stated, um, we cannot increase the budget, we can only be.
Mr. Voss is correct, and this budget has to be, preliminary budget has to be submitted to the county by September the thirtieth. So that doesn't give us a lot of time to consider any reductions, even if we approve the amount that's presented tonight. That gives us until that December date then to work on any budget proposals that anyone may have for a reduction.
There any further discussion?
For, does any come for or not, this is not a final vote, Suzanne.
Right.
This is. Not final.
Any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, motion by Councilmember Harrington, second by Councilmember Plazens, uh, Councilmember Urkel.
Nay.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
You're, you're on mute, right?
Yep. Sorry, aye.
And Mayor Voss.
Aye. That motion passes.
Motion number two, staff request council consider approval of resolution twenty twenty dash forty seven, setting the preliminary property tax levy and budget for twenty twenty one.
There a motion on resolution three twenty dash forty seven?
So moved.
Um, uh, ma- motion made by, uh, Jim? Tom, you second?
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion?
Well, I have the same question on this one, does this work the same way? Or are these numbers set in stone, um, where they, um?
They're, they're, Suzanne, they're all subject to the same requirements of the other one. This is the preliminary, and the final is not passed until December.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, uh, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote on this motion?
Motion by Councilmember Harrington, second by Councilmember Ronnie, Councilmember Urkel.
Nay.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazens.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that motion passes.
Motion number three, staff request council to consider approval of resolution twenty twenty dash forty eight, setting the preliminary twenty twenty one EDA levy and budget.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Motion made in second, uh, discussion on this mo- motion. Seeing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote?
Motion by Councilmember Harrington, second by Councilmember Ronnie, Councilmember Urkel.
Nay.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazens.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. That motion passing.
Motion number four, staff request council consider approval of resolution twenty twenty dash forty nine, setting the preliminary twenty twenty one HRA levy and budget.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion? Hearing none, uh, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote for this motion?
Uh, motion by Councilmember Harrington, second by Councilmember Plazens, Councilmember Urkel.
Nay.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazens.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. That motion passes. Uh, that concludes our primary levy and budget, on to consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt him as consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Suzanne.
I'd like, uh, to pull items A, B, D as in Delta, and E as in Echo.
Yeah. Any other discussion? And to the motion, uh, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote?
Uh, motion by Councilmember Harrington, second by Councilmember Urkel, um, Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazens.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. That motion passes, um, Zan, item A.
Item A is the bill list, I have some questions. One, um, is on page one hundred and five, you have the office equipment rental for U.S. Bank Finance. I'm wondering what that's for, and I notice that we do a lot of rental. And I'm just wondering, uh, if rental versus purchase is more cost effective, if that's been analyzed?
Suzanne, for that item, that's the rental for a copying machine. And copying machines are almost always done on a rental or a lease basis. And, uh, when you do that, then you get the full maintenance on those things at a better rate on copies that are charged.
Uh, because I, I do notice that we do pay some people for printing too. And so what's the difference of, I mean, why are we paying somebody for printing if we're renting a copy machine? Is it specialized printing or?
Yeah, the, the fees on those are based on the equipment rental itself, and then on the number of copies printed. So, uh, that's what determines what the cost of operating a copying machine is in an office setting.
So why do we pay for p- extra printing outside of, um, or is that? It's not the same thing, it was an entirely different thing on the bills list, uh, printing for a different company even. Why are we, um, hiring another company to print something for us if we have our own copiers?
Which, which bill are you talking about for a separate printing bill?
I have to look for it. Um, do all printing, it's right below that, for seventy nine ninety?
That's not related to the copying, uh, machine, that's some printing I think that the fire department had done. Think it may have involved some labels, I can look that up though and get back to you.
Okay, well, that's a, that's the only question I had on that one. My other, my next thing is on the septic cleanings, we had four of them done, and I figured three are for the fire station. What was the fourth one for, and?
I would, I would have to look that up, that could be for any number of our facilities, could be for Public Works, uh, the ice arena, generally city halls are done in the summertime. Again, I can look that up and get back to you to let you know which one that was done.
And then, um, the A solid waste, uh, are we in a contract with them? I just noticed we, we pay them for a lot of different separate, I guess we pay them for each building, right? So, um, I'm just wondering if we go out and get, um, cost estimates on those too?
Uh, we, we normally check those the first of the year, we do have a contract with them, they do herb side garbage picked up for us at certain places, but the biggest item we have are the trash dumpsters we have at the ice arena, the fire station, and Public Works.
Right, um, what is the plant, where it says government buildings, comma, plant? Is that for, which, which building is that? I'm just curious.
That should be our water treatment plant.
Okay, um, and then the street maintenance, what would that be for?
Uh, can you be a little more specific on what item you're talking about in the street maintenance?
Are you talking about the?
Page one hundred and eight.
Excuse me?
On page one hundred and eight, it's A solid waste for street maintenance. I'm just wondering what, um, if that's a once, one time thing, or if they do that all the time? And they have their own building? This is, um, I don't know, I just noticed this stuff and questions pop in my head, so I ask.
That would be for the container at the Public Works building. And there's two there, there's a cardboard container, and there's also a waste and refuse container.
Okay, so it's labeled street maintenance, why wouldn't it be next in the Public Works column?
That, that, that's just the category it's charged to, we don't have a category essentially called Public Works. Under Public Works, we have two categories we essentially charge to, and that is street maintenance and parks.
Oh, okay. And then my last question is on the, why there are three connectsus bill- billings for the water utility? It came to twenty five hundred dollars, are there three buildings, three sep- why, why three different buildings?
Well, there would be three separate meters, we have metered at the main water plant, which is off Baiki Boulevard. We have it metered also for the Whispering Aspens, um, plant, which is up off two forty first Avenue. And then there's also a meter there for the water tank.
Oh, okay, well, that's using a lot of energy, that particular thing, aren't we? Thanks for answering those.
We just wanted to let you know, we, you know, we didn't turn around and just do it and hope that no one would catch. We actually discussed with the staff regarding this at the time, and this was over, you know, over a year ago, this would have happened, but we did discuss with them.
Okay, um, but from staff's perspective, council, the, the site plan approved by council had the Center Islands, right?
Is it?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, and, and it has been any actions by council since to remove that?
No, there has not.
So, what I don't understand then is, is, uh, staff is asking for council direction regarding the Center Islands. We, we don't have a, we've never had a proposal to delete those, have we? Or we've considered?
No, but what was happening is that council approved that site plan with Center Islands, and so did the city engineer. However, um, previous staff stated that there was no Center Islands needed. Um, so I've been going back and forth with the developer, um, on this, on saying yes, you need the Center Islands, and, um, they're believing that they don't. So what we do need is just a concrete answer on, do they need the Center Islands or not?
Mayor, if I, you may speak for a second?
Yes, please.
Uh, and again, and I get there's the situation to where you have an adopted, uh, site plan on October fourth, two thousand seventeen. Uh, what I would add though is, it's not uncommon that during the process of departmental review and further things.
Steve, can you mute your line? There we go.
It's, uh, not uncommon that during departmental review and request by, for instance, even the fire department chief, that the site plan may change, and it did even during departmental review here. So the site plan that actually ended up getting done is not the same one as October fourth either. We were asked to put in fire hydrants on the backside, those were all after a site plan. So, and I don't think, I think, that didn't, that wouldn't have gone back to council for approval again. I, it, I, I feel for you on both sides of this, because I deal with it, in our city, we just had the same issue. Is it, is it only when something's material? Um, is it not, and I guess each city may have to differ on that, but, um, I, I just want you to know that, I mean, we'll gladly put them in if that's the case and you want them back in. Uh, it just wasn't as though we, we chose to just do it and hope not, we did discuss with city hall when making the decision. We don't believe islands are very beneficial in especially Minnesota weather. Um, and that's just our opinion on it, I wrote a letter regarding it. If the council collaboratively still wants those in, uh, we understand and will, will comply.
Okay, um, maybe we can clarify this with council right now. Um, basically, it's asking for a request to delete something that was approved by a previous council. So the question is, to council members, is, is there any, uh, interest on, on pursuing this? Suzanne?
I kind of agree that Center Islands can be a nuisance, but especially if we have a lot of snow. Um, they're not so important to me as the lighting is, I think, a big concern to me, which we'll get to.
Anyone else? Uh, I, I, I don't read a desire by council to change that from the original plan, in terms of Center Island. And then the lights, so there's discussion on lights between staff and whether, whether there's adequate amount of lighting for parking lot?
Yeah, if I, if I may speak to that, uh, we have no problem if it doesn't meet the illuminations based on the ordinance, there'd be more light required to meet that, that's not a problem. In the developers agreement itself, it discusses lighting and its wall packs on the building with downward angle. Um, that's to accomplish outside, same thing again, we've done in the last two apartments. If that doesn't meet the illumination requirements per ordinance, then we need additional lighting, then we'll have to put up additional lighting, we have no issue with that. And if we can't provide to you the, the, the testing, and we'll have that either by the end of this month. If we don't meet it, then we'll look to provide you something as far as where we can put some exterior lighting in there. That's not an issue as far as the, doing that, we were being told that we had to have parking lights up. Um, the only thing I would reference again is the developers agreement even refers to the wall packs.
So let me, let me just go back to what you were just saying, so I understand correctly. Are you saying that there's not enough illumination with the downward facing lights? And you might have to change that in order to have enough light according to what we require? Or can you just add more lights or change intensity of the light bulbs in the current lights in order to meet what we're requesting?
Uh, w- w- we did exactly what you just said, but haven't ran the second test. So our lighting, we thought potentially the, um, and I'm gonna be bad, I'm not, lumens, I'm assuming it's maybe used, but whatever it might be for brightness, and we actually upgraded to the next one up to try to make sure we get our lighting out. We'll run the test again, and if we don't meet city requi- city code requirement, then we'll have to change the lighting somehow, yes, and add more lighting.
Okay, so we, we basically need to see results, you're agreeing to meeting the, the city requirements?
Yeah, we, yeah, we're not saying we want anything less than what the city requirements already are.
Randy, do you have something else, sir?
Um, not on the lights topic, I have another issue that I would like to address.
Um, on lights, is there any other more discussion on the lights? Okay, go ahead, Randy.
Um, well, we, the discussion along with this, um, agreement has been, uh, the playground equipment. And, um, my first question to you, Rich, is do you have the information as to how many children are currently in the phase one apartment?
Yeah, so I did ask for that information today, because I figured it'd be pertinent. Uh, I believe from ages twelve and under, we have seventeen currently in there. Which is higher than what I would have expected, and, and in Saint Cloud, in eighty-four, we have like two, but we do have seventeen, that's one seven in this current place.
I just, um, I mean, because, you know, a playground for seventeen and possibly thirty-four, um, seems like a greater amount than you could put up on the current available property that you have. I'm just wondering whether we can, you know, obviously, we, we would like you to, um, fulfill your requirements for the playground equipment that's, that's already been requested. I am just wondering if we need to maybe move this topic back to the Parks Department as a side issue, um, as to what we're gonna do, um, you know, about so many children living in this area? I mean, I know that one, one of the topics that was discussed was, you know, you could have just a small little playground, and then, while there is no really close park, I mean, there is Northland Manor to take your kids to, and that was kind of what was, you know, kind of the backup plan, um, to be able to take your children to go to a park too. And, you know, with a city as big as we, we are, and it sounds like a lot when we say we have seventeen parks, um, in some areas, you still have to travel in order to get to those parks. Um, so I am just curious if, um, council may actually wanna, you know, kick part of this question back to parks or staff? Maybe kick this back to parks and maybe have a rediscussion about, you know, whether we need to actually do something more for, uh, this area of the city? Thanks.
I, I think that's a, that's an idea to bring, send it back to parks. Um, I'm just wondering if perhaps, um, instead of a second set of, of, I assume identical playground equipment, that another similar type of amenity be, be installed rather than another, uh, playground equipment? Because obviously, uh, you know, residents of, of, one building could easily go over to the other building for the playground.
Mayor, are you referring to maybe, uh, some age, changing the age appropriations of the two sets so that the young ones may be on one side, and that eight to twelve may be in a different type of a system?
I mean, that, that, that's, I think that's one option, but, you know, maybe there's something that's not necessarily playground equipment that can be added in lieu of that playground equipment for a second phase, what I mean?
Yeah, but what, I like thinking, I, give you a little example, or no?
I was hoping you would have that, so. A water park, how's that, does that make sense? No?
Yeah, you guys have probably dove into splash pads already, so.
Well, and, and maybe it's not even necessarily playground equipment, maybe, you know, it's a gazebo, or it's, it's, uh.
Well, we do have the, there's, like, in the, I want you to know that the girls actually got put in today, it's women who are actually in, but there's a community patio on the, the, the corner of each of these buildings that come out as far as the, the older age, as far as having, and families still, a place to sit outside, eat, grill. Um, I think we have, I, I think we might have a fire table out there on that one too. Um, that would be more on the older side of it. I guess my thought maybe with what you're talking about is maybe looking at something so we have equipment that's geared towards that, maybe that three to seven range on one side and an eight to twelve on the other. I mean, we're limited a little bit in space, I mean, there's, when, when you, when you throw in the drainage aspect of the six acres and put two buildings up at a hundred and thirty-eight units, there isn't a whole lot of usage, useful property around it at this point. Um, we ran into that issue, if you remember, on the backside, trying to see how far out we can get to put, you know, our fire, our fire road in. Um, and then we, we almost maximize out as far as we could get at this point. So, uh, without acquiring more property, I think it'd be difficult to increase much more than having the two playsets.
What about like, uh, single basketball, half a court, half a basketball court or something like that? That would, um, settle for the, just ten to fifteen year olds, I think, something like that.
Yeah, Councilmember, I think that's probably a good idea, um, of something that probably could fit right in that same amount of, um, blue, uh, footprint, and, and something to probably go from that eight all the way up to eighteen, whatever you want to put, that might not be a good, that's probably a pretty good idea. Thank you.
Is, is, is the entire parking lot required for the amount of units? In other words, if you were to, you know, carve out a small section of, of the parking lot and, and make it, you know, that, that basketball area, or you could just put a pole up even, I think that might be helpful. Or, you know, even a skate park is, is another idea, that doesn't take up a whole lot of room, but, um, that would be for older kids as well.
Yeah, I do know, uh, um, I'm pretty sure, it's definitely may know off the top of her head, but I'm pretty sure we are capped, like, we have the exact amount of parking spaces we have to have per ordinance. So I think to change anything in the parking lot would require, uh, up to a lot of that left parking space, but I, I think, uh, I think, I, I think we're on a good idea as far as maybe trying to get a basketball hoop up with a, you know, a half a court or a, you know, a quarter of a court, I think it's probably a pretty good idea on the other side. But we can definitely throw the option by, and you can leave that one later at another time.
So to Randy's suggestion, shooting this back to parks for the comment, any thoughts?
One, one thing about this topic is, uh, to some extent, we're assuming all the kids getting on the lot, all available at the same time of day. The likelihood of any of that happening is pretty slim. If there's fourteen kids in there and you get bored and four or five, maybe six at a time. And how many, what is it, three to seven, how many of those, if you know?
I don't have the breakdown from the age, I could definitely get that, I just know I, we're twelve and under, seventeen, but, you know, maybe a thought, council member, would be, you know, once it's up, our manager is very receptive to, you know, any questions, anything to ask her, she's there, she's twenty-four seven and lives there. She could, you could always find out, like, hey, can you monitor the usage out there? Are you getting complaints by residents? Uh, we obviously want our people to be happy so they stay there as well. So, you know, it's something that we could look at, it is, the likelihood that we can do more than the playset and the basketball hoop on this site might be tough, but do we have a need for more? Maybe we find that out in the next year.
Yeah, it's, I, I'm just suggesting that we might be looking for a, a big answer where there isn't one. You know, as far as, uh, how many kids, we, we, it's the likelihood of needing what was it, fourteen, needing fourteen kids to play and get together at the same time is pretty slim. You know, for everybody to just group and go out there and spend however much time. Especially with today's video games and all the crap that occupies all the time. So, uh, it, it's just a, just a thought. But I'd like to make a comment about the, the islands. The iCloud snowed for ten years before going to Michigan. And the more obstacles you put in the driver's way, the more chance there is to damage both property and, uh, vehicles. And you're moving and the snow and stuff, so it's, we've already, we've already ruled on this issue, but it's, as long as it was brought up, it sounds, uh, Suzanne made some good points there. If you, if you get a big snow year, that's gonna be a nightmare to deal with. I'm done, thank you.
Well, so maybe perhaps, uh, with regards to the playground equipment for Phase Two, we just reserve, well, actually, we'll go in, you know, send us back, you know, send this, part of this back to parks, get their input. And then, um, you know, a- as the project progresses, you can refine what, that, that amenity for the second phase will be. Whether it's, you know, playground equipment, whether it's a different age class, whether it's a hoop and a court, you know, you know, something else, you know, not make the decision right now, just let, let, let this one, you know, develop a little bit, so.
That's fine with us, Mayor.
Okay.
See, I just have one comment, mine's kind of piddly, but the, the fire department had asked me about possibly maybe getting an address in front of that building? Because when they get a call, it just says these couple apartments, if, if you guys could, you know, put some kind of an address sign up there? What your actual address is?
That is a requirement that's on their list for.
It is, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember, how long ago was that? Because there should have been a sign that was put up a couple of weeks back, and I gotta assume it must have our address. I would, i- is the big sign not have our address on it?
Yeah, I haven't been over there in over a week, Rich, so I'd, I'd have to look.
It's intentional that if it is, we definitely would want to make sure, I, I know it's code anyway, so I would assume. But if we didn't put it on the sign, we'll make sure it gets out there, we do have one on the entrance coming into the apartment.
Yeah, and that was my understanding is, is fire chief, the charm and the building official wanted the numbers put on the apartment building itself. There was none on the apartment building, ones that are readable.
Oh, besides all the three?
Yes, one that are actually on the building itself, correct.
Okay, yeah, not a problem.
Okay, are there any other clarifications in need before we proceed?
Yes, uh, Mayor, if I can speak to, and I didn't, uh, Stephanie brought up, uh, the parks, the parks fee. It's not that I, it's twenty-three thousand that was paid, but it's not that that was for both. It does clearly state in the developers agreement that the Phase Two, uh, parks fee would be paid separates. The only thing I happened to notice when I was just looking up your, your ordinances as far as parks fee goes, is unless I'm missing something, the parks, park dedication is either land, obviously, or, uh, cash. And if, and if you do cash, it's capped at two thousand per acre for commercial. Did this, is there, because I, if we paid twenty-three and it's six acres, I'm wondering, did it get calculated wrong or am I missing something? That was what I wrote in email.
Yeah, and that's something, um, Jack and I had spoke about this later this afternoon. We're gonna have to take a look at that, we're, we don't have anything that states that it was calculated off of commercial or residential. So that's something, Rich, that we'll work with you on, figure that out.
And that's not a problem if that gets filled in, uh, when it does, you know, maybe it's a, you know, I know in here it just has the amount, but then in that case, maybe, uh, whoever does motion, maybe states it.
So, Stephanie and Jack, what, what are we being, was council being asked to approve tonight? We seem to have various sets of documents.
Tonight's city council is asked to, um, approve or deny the developers agreement, um, addendum for Phase Two. Staff is in support of, of what's been discussed tonight and, um, moving forward with the addendum. Now we're just asking for city council's motion on that.
Are, are you referring to what you emailed out this afternoon?
Correct, yes.
With, with the red line markup in it and everything?
Yes, yes.
So my concern with that, my concern with that is, again, we're still waiting for some information here that's not complete. So my question is, is there a rush to get this approved? Because, um, you know, just the fact that we're talking about the letter of credit, which is supposed to be coming from Craig, that's not filled in. I mean, uh, the other items, again, you know, it, it seems, we've talked about those. And I realize that, you know, you, you still have to work on the, on the city park dedication fee as well. Is that really something that we can go ahead and approve without having that information in there? Or are we just kind of addressing this as, you know, kind of a blank check type of thing? And, you know, I'm, I'm not really comfortable with that. I guess I would like to get everyone else's thoughts and, and explanation as to how we would go about that, thanks.
Yeah, I, I think, um, maybe to restate what Randy said is, is what's presented from us tonight that came out this afternoon is, you know, far, far from complete. I mean, it's all, there's notes on here, uh, blanks, there's more information that's needed, so to, to Randy's question, is there some pressing need that this needs to be approved tonight? Let's question the Steph, Jack and Rich.
Uh, member Petty, or sorry, I just did my council meeting. Petty here, Rich Petty, uh, y- yes, it is, I've actually, you know, this has been, this one's been going on for quite a while and request of it, and I know it just came from the attorney, um, for various different reasons, um, to you guys very recently, but this has been needed for almost the last time, probably over a month ago, and this actually is tied to the financing, so the bank needs to know what the developers agreement is. Uh, so I, I get it's difficult to get it right now, that's, just so we know that's not from my doing as far as the fact that that information is being provided now. I, we do need it though as soon as we can. I do get the two things outstanding, a park dedication fee, which, you know, even if it was, you know, assuming it doesn't get any greater than the other one, but then we, you know, we're per city ordinance on that, or that agreement, part of the agreement still comes back somehow, I'd be fine. The letter of credit, we would assume, doesn't change much from the previous developers agreement, which, I would assume Craig would be very close to the same as what we had on the previous one. That would be of no issue to us either, but time is of the essence unfortunately on this one.
Well, what I don't understand is, is how council can approve and I, and that I sign and staff signs an agreement that's gonna have blanks in it to be filled out later. I, I don't know how we can legally do that. Mr. Nelson, do you have a, any thoughts on that?
Thank you, Mayor Voss, members of council, um, I, I'm unaware of how many blanks are remaining in this. If, if we're down to the, the park dedication fee and the letter of credit. There's a potential to insert a term saying, uh, no work on any improvements could occur until the letter of a credit is agreed upon and approved by the, uh, you know, city attorney, city administrator, something along those lines, but, um, but if, if tho- those are the only two, um, uh, you know, we, we, we can work with the terms on that and, and make clear that the letter of credit needs to be approved before any, any construction or improvements begin. But if there's more than those blanks, uh, then it might be a, a concern.
I mean, the, the, the first page of this agreement has, in the second whereas, it looks like notes. I, I, I don't understand what that whereas is supposed to state. That's something can be clarified here?
Member Petty, if I could just say how I would have read, how I read that, but, um, I know the, besides the rest of the rest, my understanding is the wording should have been developer has substantially completed Phase One of Sodomistic P U D. And then this is a different project, so the rest of the stuff writing in there, to me, would be noteworthy, but those are a separate project, uh, that does need to get done, and there is letter of credit and escrow, uh, money on behalf of that stuff to make sure it does get done. But those wouldn't be something that needs to get done for this, for this addendum. So I know they're in there to, and, and I would have took that as to say, here's what I'm referring to and why it says substantially, but uh, that's, I guess, what I took that as. But I, I'm sure if, if your attorney could comment, or Steph?
Yeah, and that's what I meant when I added it in there, um, I just wanted to make sure that it was known that the, the developer has substantially completed Phase One. And although it's read, the rest of the information is stuff that I just went over with you guys just so you knew what still needed to be completed in Phase One. Um, but that information won't be added into this development agreement. We'd only change on that second whereas, we'd be saying developer has substantially completed Phase One.
So with being said, can we just stick with the whereas, the developer has substantially completed Phase One? And then, under the addendums, have the intention that, you know, these items will be complete as part of this addendum? Can we do that as, as, you know, I guess in addition to this piece?
Mayor and council members, I, I, I think that is, is probably required at this point to, to insert a term saying that, uh, these things, uh, will be completed as agreed upon, uh, by city staff and approved by the city attorney of construction not to begin until, um, uh, until these measures are complete, including the, the completed and, uh, and signed letter of credit.
Oh, let, let me ask it this way, I mean, I, I think we've discussed the substance of this agreement and any issues, you know, related to that. The form of this agreement, uh, if it's made in a motion, is, is certainly not there yet. You know, the blanks need to be filled, but can, can council approve the development agreement for signature contingent upon, um, you know, the numbers from paragraph three being added from Craig? And, um, the park dedication, uh, fee being clarified by staff? Because I don't think that's something a council would debate anyway. Is that something we can do?
Yes, I believe that's, that's something you can do, and, um, you know, that, that's something that, uh, I, I have, I have worked on in the past with, uh, letter of credit approval being, um, being approved by staff and, and the city attorney.
Okay.
That being said, you know, looking at the, uh, paragraph of, um, you know, letter three, you know, this is gonna require some, s- some edits right now, an amendment.
We, we, and again, with, with our thoughts on that this afternoon, uh, we wanted to get you the draft over, and as you can see, you did not get a clean copy of that tonight. We're hoping for some direction or approval on that, and if that's the case, then it would be signed at a later date. No, earlier than tomorrow and later until we get the other information for the LOC and the termination and clarification of the parks dedication.
Okay, so, I think from here, you can entertain a motion. You know, if there is a motion made, I'd, I'd suggest that, you know, we recognize that some of these blanks will be filled in, but still be authorized to be signed following all that completion of all that information. With that, uh, is there a motion regarding addendum to development agreement?
I will make a motion for, um, the amendment or the addition to the develop, addendum to the developers agreement, uh, by and between the City of Espehtle and E B Properties LLC. Changing the whereas developer has completed Phase One to developer has substantially completed Phase One. And then, uh, that item number three, uh, will have been agreed to and updated from, Craig to include the uh, letter of credit. And that the not completed items of, uh, the islands, the lighting, uh, the playground equipment, the additional stone, the affidavit from the steel supplier, be added as item number eleven of the addendum. And number eleven of this, uh, addendum items shall be binding on Espehtle Properties accessories and assigns, be changed to item number twelve.
We're stuck at that motion.
Second.
False record.
Suzanne, seconds, uh, discussion. Staff's okay with this approach?
Yes.
Mayor, members of council, if I can ask the question, was the, um, term, uh, that execution of the agreement by the city is contingent upon the completion of, uh, the letter of credit?
That, that was the way I read it.
And is it, was that part of the motion?
I did not expressly state it that way, but I did ask for the, um, item number three to have that completed as part of, uh, the addendum.
And if I may ask the developer, uh, Mr. Petty, do, do you understand that, uh, like, the execution and the, the binding nature of this agreement will, will occur after these terms have been filled in?
Yeah, wha- what would we anticipate on timeframe for those terms as Craig? I mean, I know this is substantially the same building in itself, so I know Craig's already done a lot of value wasting the last time he did a letter of credit. Would we anticipate that this would happen quite, quite fast as far as Craig's world on this?
I can't speak for Craig, but we would push to have that completed by the end of the week. I can't speak for Craig, but we would push to have that completed by the end of the week.
Cause, uh, just maybe so council would know where we're at with this is we're wanting to move dirt immediately, um, as soon as we possibly can. And obviously having, you know, this in place is, is really what we're trying to do and have our financing closed on. But we actually looking to get early, uh, starts if we can from a title company to avoid touching the winter too much on the footings and foundation. Uh, ultimately, the building will get built, you know, with winter time happening as well. But the footings foundation, we want to make sure we get in right away.
But the, the, the letter of credit would be a condition prior to dirt can be moved and construction can begin.
Yeah, we would have the letter of credit to you immediately as long as we just had a value that we obviously could assess to it. And I know in the last agreement, it was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is what Craig had assigned to it. Um, and he got that in the form of a letter of credit from the financial institution. I just wanted to make, I wonder, you know, as far as I know it's open, but, you know, that, that, that Craig, you know, will be addressing it so it doesn't sit out too long.
Sure, I just, and Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to make it perfectly clear that no construction, no dirt, no nothing moves on the site until that term is in place. Cause the document will not be executed by, by Mayor Voss and, and Jack, uh, Davis until the letter of credit's provided.
I, Rich, I imagine staff will be talking to Craig tomorrow about that?
Thank you, Ben.
Hey, is there any other discussion? Hey, hearing none, Mr. So if you take roll call vote.
Excuse me. Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Counsel, thank you very much for your time. Staff, thank you for your work today as well. We'll see you guys later.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Rich.
Hey, on to city administrator.
Item seven G one, Edmar Lane Speed Limit Reduction Proposal. In June 2020, city, the city received a petition from 21 of the 34 residents on Edmar Lane, west of Bicker Street, requesting the posting of this road to a 20 mile per hour speed limit. The current speed limit on this street is 30 miles per hour. On July 13th, 2020, the city placed a radar speed display unit on, on Edmar Lane to gather speed and traffic count data. From July 13th through the 19th, the westbound traffic was counted. There was an average of 556 recorded at this location was an average speed of 18 miles an hour. From July 20th to July 24th, the eastbound traffic was monitored. There was an average of 266 vehicles counted at this site with an average speed of 15 miles per hour. Attachment one for the unit of all locations of the shown in, in the packet presented on July the 20th. Minnesota Statute 169.14 addresses lawful speed limits for municipalities. Subsection seven limits speed to 25 miles per hour in residential roadways if adopted by the road authority having jurisdiction over the residential roadway. In the case of Edmar Lane, the following factors tend to reduce excessive speeds. Edmar Lane has a narrow pavement to most city streets. Edmar Lane has 30 driveway entrances along its 2,700 foot length between Bicker Street and the cul-de-sac. And there are four curves on Edmar Lane that serve as traffic calming measures. Most of the complaints involving speeding violations at this location involve delivering garbage trucks. Speed limits can be set below 25 miles per hour, but require special studies related to safety, engineering, and traffic analysis. Based on information collected by the city during the period of July 13th through 24th, 2020, the data gathered do not support lowering the speed limit to 20 miles per hour. At the August 3rd, 2020 city council meeting, council directed staff to research the city with a standard wide speed limit for residential streets. Staff presented their reports to the council at the September 2nd, 2020 work meeting and outlined considerations that needed to be factored in the decision to establish a citywide residential speed limit introduced to speed limit on Edmar Lane. After this discussion, staff, city council directed staff to postpone further evaluation of the citywide speed limit and introduce the request to lower the speed limit on Edmar Lane for consideration at tonight's meeting. As a result, staff request that city council consider one of two options. Leave the speed limit as it is at 30 miles per hour on Edmar Lane or reduce the speed limit 25 miles per hour on Edmar.
I'll make a motion.
Why don't, why don't you send a li- why don't you send a letter to like the garbage company and the school buses? And see if that'll do anything.
We will definitely note, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely notify them. Uh, and I think the discussion involved school buses the last time. I think Mayor Voss pointed that out that probably they may be some of the bigger offenders of any of them out there. But, uh, we'll contact all those companies to make sure that their drivers are notified to pump the brakes a little bit on Edmar.
I think that would probably care of your speed limit though.
Yeah, at, at the last meeting, at the work meeting, the, towards the end of the discussion, um, I know I had said that our problem is enforcement, it's not signage. And Steve indicated to contact those companies and let them know that, uh, things are a little too fast in there. That's, that's really the answer. And if it will, I'd make a motion to leave the speed limit as it is and, and the city administrator or somebody contact the, um, commercial vehicles that operate, companies of the commercial vehicles that operate in that area and, um, notify the company that some vehicles are exceeding the, uh, reasonable speed in, in that setting.
Tom, is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
It's sort of a rambling, but, uh, to leave the speed limits as it is and the city administrator, contact the companies that, with the commercial vehicles in that area. No blame, but, uh, that, the general information, uh, numerous commercial vehicles and school buses. I know you said school buses are something worth, uh, and school buses need to pay attention to what their speeds are.
Okay. Is there, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that one.
Uh, 10 seconds, discussion.
I agree 100%. Just leave it at 30 miles an hour and, um, contact these trucking, truckers and buses and stuff.
So I said it before and I'll say it again. Um, we've had two thirds of our residents make this request. And while I don't disagree that we should be contacting the school buses and the garbage trucks to reduce their speed, um, in this area. Again, I think that since this is a dead end road and, and we are talking about two thirds of the residents asking for this reduction, um, and they wanted it down to 20 miles an hour, that, you know, the cost is at most, what we're talking about is $360 to reduce it down to 25 miles per hour. And, you know, I don't want to just ignore the fact that we have this many people who have gotten together and made this request. So, um, my feeling is that, you know, we shouldn't be leaving it at 30 miles per hour. I think we should be reducing it to 25. That's my opinion. Thanks.
It's, one, one of the problems that we can't get away from with this is, uh, to, for this thing to work at 20 miles per hour or 25, we're gonna have to add about another eight to 12 hours per day of sheriff patrol time to our, uh, agreement for that one's 2,700 feet of that street. Because without the sheriff being there, it doesn't matter if you put a snail up to the speed limit. Now, if nobody sees it, nobody who, who sees it as a authority, what's happened? Nothing.
Tom, the, the, the sheriff's not enforcing the 30 mile an hour speed limit they were either. So I don't think, I don't think that would change because we changed the speed limit on that road. I think the people who see that sign are gonna think twice about the speed. Cause they'll, you know, most people recognize that's not 30, it's something slower, it should slow down. So I think that's the intent of the speed limit signs in these areas. It's not, it's not for enforcement, you know, we're not, you know, there's no way we're gonna do that. So if there's a problem, we'll, 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 they'll get reported, but it's not gonna be something we're gonna have a squad car sitting out at.
Yeah. Jack?
Yes.
Uh, uh, the first number on that study was, I think, 566 or something, 56 vehicles? What was the time period to that?
That was July the 13th through July the 19th, 2020.
Was six days. Six days with nearly a hundred vehicles per day. They're not. That, that's. I don't, I don't know. It's a dead end street with close to a hundred vehicles per day traffic on that, that one study. They can't all be from that neighborhood.
I, I think perhaps, um, you know, we can keep in mind that, uh, if this motion is made passes, you know, this could be revisited in the future again. Um, you know, hopefully, uh, the residents will see, um, you know, these commercial vehicles and the school buses hitting our request. And, and our request is not gonna be just this street, it's gonna be anywhere in the city. Uh, cause this happens on every residential street with the garbage trucks with, with school buses. So, um, we could always go back and revisit that.
To, to echo your comment from the work meeting, um, the, a letter from the city administrator regarding their doing business in our city will probably have a pretty good impression of.
I hope so.
So I would just like to take a moment to point out that we had another traffic concern in our city, um, with engine braking. And, you know, that was a lot less amount of people who were requesting that change as well as the fact that there was really gonna be no way we were going to be able to enforce it other than to park somebody along that road to make sure that that was being done. And so I think we're talking again about probably a very similar amount of money to be spent um, with a whole lot more people who are making this request. So, um, again, that's, I, I, I don't disagree with, again, contacting the garbage trucks and the school buses, but to me, I still feel that, um, by not doing what we can for, for this many people who have made this request, I think, um, to me, does not sit very well. So, um, that's my opinion. Thanks.
With regards to the study, we have 556, 66 vehicles with an average of like 18 miles per hour? Jack?
That was the results we got from the radar unit.
Well, we're, we're telling people that we, we have too excessive speed and our study shows 18 miles per hour. And that's, that's too much, so we'll wanna have 20.
I mean, I agree a lot with what Randy's saying, that the neighborhood didn't go to the extent. It's not a huge extent. And I think it will.
The data.
I think it will, in effect, so. I'm sorry, Suzanne?
I just said the data, I didn't mean to talk at the same time as you. The data doesn't support it. Like you said, it, we're gonna reduce it to 25 and most of the cars aren't even, um, going the speed limit that we're reducing it to. Just to appease people who think cars are driving faster than what they really are probably because of the nature of the road and the width of the road and everything and, uh, uh, condensed nature of the area. It might seem like they're going faster, but like we said, if it's, um, buses and garbage trucks, it's not that many vehicles anyways. Um, I, I just, I, I can't support this. That's my opinion.
From an evidentiary standpoint, we're asking for 25 miles per hour when the average is 18.
Hey, is there any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Nelson, to the motion, it will call vote please.
Councilmember Urkel.
Nay.
Councilmember Harrington.
Nay.
Councilmember Ronnie.
I'm voting on the motion to keep it as it is and that contact the commercial vehicle company. And I vote aye.
Councilmember Plazanz.
Nay.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. We, uh, Chris, we asked for clarification. Suzanne, how did you vote?
I voted to keep it at 30 miles per hour.
Did you say aye?
I said nay to change it.
I believe the, the motion was to, um, was to maintain the speed line.
To maintain a 30 mile an hour speed limit?
That was the motion.
Then I, I vote, I, I don't, do I have to rescind it or something?
Suzanne, Suzanne.
Chris, was, was there a second on that one, on that motion? I didn't hear a second. When Tommy made the motion, I didn't hear a second.
I, I, I thought you seconded Councilmember Harrington, so I apologize.
No, I didn't. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay.
I think so, Jim.
You know, if, if it's, it's 30, I, I wanna, I want, I'd like to keep it at 30. I guess I, I misunderstood Tommy.
So your vote, Jim, is?
Is aye.
Aye, okay. So I have it as four ayes, one nay.
And just for the record, I, I had the motion by Councilmember Ronnie and the second by Councilmember Harrington.
That's all I have. Okay, that motion passes. Speed limit stays the same and, uh, staff is gonna send out letters. I'm not letting them G2.
Consideration of the reinstatement of the public forum. On March 19th, 2020, the East Bethel City Council passed a local emergency declaration to address the COVID-19 pandemic and requirements of executive orders from the governor's office. Among the steps required to deal with these matters, the public forum was suspended through April 15th, 2020. On April 13th, 2020, the suspension was extended until such time as rescinded by city council. The suspension is temporary and was approved to minimize public contact in city hall to comply with guidelines from the Minnesota Department of Health and the CDC. At the August 24th, 2020 city council meeting, council directed this item be added to the September 2nd, 2020 work meeting to discuss the feasibility of restoration of the public forum as item one on the council agenda forum. Public forum has been a scheduled item that was conducted before the start of the council meeting, but was separate from the council agenda itself. Public forum provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items which are not on the agenda. Public forum is limited to 15 minutes and is not to be used to make personal attacks, to air personal grievances, to make political endorsements, or for political campaign purposes. Individuals required to limit their comments to three minutes. Public comment during these presentations are not to be used for problem solving or reacting to comments made, or rather for hearing citizen concerns for informational purpose for council. During the temporary suspension of the public forum, citizens been encouraged to contact city council members or staff on telephone or email at any time to file complaints, request information, or present an issue of concern. As these means of contact are immediate, they generally provide a quick response to matters presented to public forum. Since the suspension began on April 13th, 2020, staff has received no requests for an item to be discussed as a public forum subject. As city council meetings are conducted virtually with electronic participation among members and citizen presenters, reinstatement of the public forum poses several challenges with this type of platform. The main issue is the different qualities of internet server. The main issue is the different qualities of internet servers of participants for connecting to the meetings. Limited or interrupted, interrupted service results and problems with audio issues. And the ability to connect to the meetings and make online presentations. An alternative to a live public forum could utilize the virtual setting to speak with council and could operate as follows. Public forum would be scheduled fifteen minutes prior to all regular council meetings or other dates to be determined. Residents would submit their topics of concern by email to the city administrator by four P M. on the Thursday. Preceding the proposed date of the public forum. City administrator would send an invitation to the requester for the electronic access to the public forum on the Friday preceding the proposed meeting. The Requestor would log into the public forum at the time and date indicated on the meeting invitation. And would be able to address council remotely when it came their time to speak. All rules of the public forum would apply to the virtual setting. The virtual public forum would not be broadcast on cable, channel ten, or YouTube. Even with the above option for participation in the virtual setting, there are issues and items that remain unchanged relating to offering the public forum as platform. These include invites to the Requestor could be shared with an unlimited number of others which could create connection issues. Problems of poor connection, background interference can disrupt the Requestor's presentations. Citizens can still contact council and staff and continuation, the suspension would not restrict or limit access to council. Logins for both the public forum and the council meeting would be necessary for city council. One staff member would have to monitor the discussion in the event there were any issues in the presentations. From January fourteenth, twenty nineteen to March twenty-third, twenty twenty, there were thirty live public forum sessions at council meeting. During that period, there were only six appearances at the public forum that involved new items. Also, the virtual public forum would not be broadcast or replayed for viewing. At the September second, twenty twenty work meeting, council directed staff to introduce this subject to council for discussion for potential action on this item. Providing the virtual public forum could be in the form of one of the following. Number one would be to continue the suspension of the public forum until the council meetings are returned to a live format. Number two, restore the public forum as a separate item to be conducted fifteen minutes. Prior to the regular council meeting in the virtual setting following the process previously described. Number three, restore the public forum as a separate item to be conducted fifteen minutes prior to the council work meeting. In a virtual setting following the process previously described. And fine, the final option would be to restore the public forum on a monthly basis. Prior to, separate from the council meeting in a virtual setting following the process previously described. Due to potential complications with connections and other issues in. Providing a virtual setting for the public forum, staff recommends the continuation of the suspension of the public forum until such time as live council meetings are restored.
Yeah, this is a question. May I?
All right, I, um. First, I don't think they should have to submit a topic in advance, it should we resume public forum. Second, there, I attend Zoom meetings all week long with up to eighty people at one time. I mean, we could open the, I don't even see why we don't open this up, so we could have visitors joining us. To observe the meeting, um, like, as if they were in the room, only there's. Just observing, they can't talk because the host has the ability to, to keep everybody, uh, audience wise muted. I, I think it should be live, uh, one hundred percent, I think it lacks transparency without it. Um, and I think people should, I think our residents deserve and want to have their voice heard up here. At, from six forty-five to seven o'clock, let them up here one at a time, they get to have their three minutes and talk and. They can stay on, it, it, it's easy to do, you could just put the link onto the, where the. Particular night's meeting onto the, uh, webpage where they can go and join, uh, they can send an email saying, I. I will be, um, presenting at the public forum tonight, and that's all that we should be requiring of them. That's my humble opinion, and I will shut up now. You're muted, Steve, if you're talking.
Hey, I shut up. Um, why are you opposed to having, uh, folks that wanna appear? To sign up ahead of time so they can get the link?
I'm not opposed to them signing up ahead of time, I'm just, um, opposed to having them. Request in, in writing what their issue is in advance. I mean, if you wanted to do it that way, that would be fine with me too, but, um, I think. Just having the spontaneous showing them up, showing up at the meeting by being able to click on the. The join now, join meeting, um, uh, on the website is, uh, more. Transparent, I guess that's the word, maybe not the word I'm looking for.
Well, the, the, the reason I'm asking is, and I. So we, to Jack's point of, you know, that over the last year or so, there were thirty live public forums. But only six times, the, you know, the, I don't think there was even six individual times, because there was a couple on one night. So I think by signing up ahead of time, staff and we know whether there's gonna be anyone at the public forum. So there's no, if there's no one signed up, then there's no sense of, of having a public forum that night, so.
I would just like to point out as well that, um. Even when we were live, we still required people to sign their name. And then provide the topic that they were going to be discussing. Um, prior to, you know, coming up, I mean, that, that was, that sheet that was then presented to. Uh, the mayor so that he could, you know, properly run the meeting. Um, so I don't really have a problem with, um, asking people to, you know, forward, uh, their request to speak at the meeting. And provide the topic that they wish to speak about, so, um, I don't really have an issue with that, so. Uh, Jack, maybe you can answer a question for me. Um, how many requests for people, uh, from people since we have. Um, discontinued the live meetings and we, we haven't had the public forum. Have wanted to, or made the request that they, they would like to address council or staff, um. Um, at one of these meetings in order to make their voices heard.
We have had no request of that nature since we had our last public forum on March the twenty-third.
Like, it, it, like I mentioned during our last work meeting, that, that I recently had the first request. Of wanting that public forum. And, and it's, it's actually an issue we talked about a little bit last time, and, and that's still being worked on by staff.
That's just a reminder, at the last work meeting, we, we discussed this in the context that. If a council person, whoever gets this, the issue would be brought forward and we would possibly be able to discuss it to some extent. And remind us that, uh, as the, uh, the current. Rules are set up, we don't answer, we let somebody say something and then go home. And we're, we're silent. Uh, what are we trying to accomplish? If we're gonna be silent anyhow, I don't know if we're. We're going over and above what we, what the current process is by trying to get the statement. And then if we try to have some discussion about it, and maybe it clarifies what the person's understanding is, or whatever the. Whatever the result could be, anyhow, that's my nickel.
I mean, I, I, I can understand residents wanting, in some circumstances, to speak to all the council at once. You know, in a more personal way than, than sending an email or a phone call, so. Um, that, that could happen, and, and I, you know. When we suspended public forum, when we made the change to go to virtual meetings. It was mostly out of, out of just the, the mechanics of, of trying to, to have that meeting, and that's why. When we did go virtual, we emphasized to the residents to continue to contact staff, continue to contact us if that needs. Yeah, I, I think, I think we're to a point that, that we've shown that we can certainly operate our, our meetings virtually. You know, and we've had other special meetings, and, and as Suzanne noted, you know, everyone's doing virtual meetings, so. You know, if we have a separate virtual meeting for the public forum, you know. You know, following what Jack outlined, um, I, I don't think it's a huge burden on staff to get that set up. And in terms of running that, I, I, I do think it's important to know who are gonna be there and they get those invites. That, that, that's kind of where I sit on it.
It's wide open without, without, without some, uh, prior notification or grant, Chris. You could have fifty people trying, you might not have any, but you could just as well have thirty people, fifty people that wanna say something, and who speaks?
Well, again, it, it's back to what the purpose is, the purpose is for. The race in the comes to public forum to communicate what's going on, you know, or what change they want, or, or issues they wanna discuss. Um, I mean, certainly do it with the format that, that Jack's outlined, but, you know, aside from the fact that recommend not, already, I think, I think.
I, I'm just thinking that there's a, a means to regulate. Timeliness as far as being able to get through it in fifteen minutes. As far as knowing ahead of time how many people there might be, um, anyhow, whatever the group decides. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to say, I've had several people comment that, um. They think the city is hiding stuff, and they've not gotten results by going to the city and, um. And I guess that's about it, but that they would like to see the public forum back, so I've had several people comment that to me. Um, no specifics on what they didn't get resolved through the city, but, um. That's all I, that's all I can say.
Yeah?
Well, I was gonna say, uh, I've had people call me and they don't want the public forum, they, they prefer to talk to me in public. You know, on the phone or something, they, uh, I asked you, I'd talk to the city council, they prefer to talk to me privately, so. You know, it probably works both ways, it's, you know, some people wanna perform, some people don't, so.
Yeah, I think, I mean, to Suzanne's comments, I, I've heard that quite a bit too, about. By not having it or taking it off our regular council agenda that, you know, the city's hiding something and, and, uh. You know, I said this last time, it's kind of hard to hide something when you got people in the audience, you got five council members and all kinds of staff, so. You know, I understand the public perception, but again, the idea behind it is to, uh, have a, another avenue of communication with, with the council, so.
Yeah, I haven't heard anybody say anything we're hiding, though, that, that's one of the things that I haven't heard, so.
I have a question for Jack, um, because I think all of us council members and mayors should be, um. Easily accessible to the public. And I've gone to our website and I actually could not find my phone number, so I'm wondering where. Is there a way where they can put our, where our. Information to, to be contacted is easily accessed and easily visible on the website?
I will check into that and make sure that that's prominently displayed.
Thank you.
I know that currently, I mean, it's. For your edification, it's, um. If you go, you know, to the, uh, city council page, um, all of our names and addresses are, are, are telephones and emails are, are there. I think the only way that you could probably make it more prominent is to actually put it on the. You know, the load page to begin with, um, and, you know, if that's. Something that you think that we need to do, I, I don't, I'm not opposed to that, I mean, I, I don't think, you know, any of us. You know, are, are adverse to speaking to, to anyone in public. Um, or have them contact us about any issues that, that they may have a concern with, I mean, I, I know that I have had. Um, quite a few issues that, that, you know, a resident has, has come to me about, and. It ends up in a, in a work meeting or a city council meeting, so. Um, a lot of times, um. You know, you can get a lot more done if you just, you know, talk to, uh, one of us. Directly rather than, you know, going to a public forum, um. But I gotta tell you, there's, you know, the comments that I've been hearing is, um. You know, boy, you know, it seems like, you know, ever since we took, took, you know, the, the videos off the, uh. The public forum is, hey, you know, I don't, there's no longer for me to have my, you know, daily dose of popcorn to watch what's going on, so. You know, there's, there's. There's been definite times where, you know, people have come up and, and, um. You know, had, had some, some issues that, you know, they wanted to present to council, but, you know, most of the time when they do. They're contacting one of us, and I'm not saying that that's the reason that we shouldn't have it, I, I think we should, um, but, um. I think there's less people who are, you know, are really interested in, in. What each individual has to say, unless there's, you know, a topic that's, you know, a lot of people are interested, and we've had a few, um. But for the most part, people really aren't that interested in the public forum, so.
I think, Suzanne, to your comment about our, our contacts, I, I think it, they used to be on the front page. Uh, before we updated the website, and I, I know it's listed on our newsletter. But, you know, maybe, you know, Jack, if you can talk to staff, maybe there is a, a better way to. A quicker way to present our contact information, rather than having to dive deep in the, the website.
Yeah, we, we'll look into it, it always helps if it's always on that opening page, so you're not searching. Habits under, so we'll take a look at that.
You click on city council, it, it does open up, so, it is there. Suzanne's there too, I see your name.
Thanks.
So is there any from council, there's any thought, you know, thought on, on. Starting up, restarting the, the public forum virtually, a, a, as, as staff has outlined. As a separate meeting, just as, just as we did before March, um, a separate meeting before our meeting. Basically, if, if residents wanna speak at public forum, they, they contact city hall ahead of time. So we know by Friday whether it's gonna even be a public forum or not, and then, uh. You know, just like.
Procedural question, if I may.
Yes.
How would we ever find out if this was, uh, council action that set this policy up for public forum? Or motion? Because that, that kind of puts it in concrete. And you almost have to rescind that. If that's what we've done.
Can you ask that a different way, Tom, I do not understand what you're asking.
If, if this is a council action that established the public forum in its present. Uh, present means. To change that. You almost have to rescind the original. Uh, motion and action. To, uh, you know what I'm saying, Chris? Well, Mr. Nelson.
Public forum has been changed a few times over the years in terms of how it's done.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, Mayor Voss, Councilmember Ronan, it, it is my understanding that the, the public forum in, uh. Yes, uh, Mayor Boss, Councilmember Ronny, it is my understanding that the, the public forum in, uh, the city of East Bethel has evolved over time, including into its most recent form prior to the pandemic occurring before the meeting and, um, not being part of the televised broadcast. So I, I think those changes have been able to, uh, have been made over time. And, uh, and however that, uh, procedure was done for the most recent change would, um, would be applicable here.
The, the, the change this time.
It's a process of evolution, you're saying?
Yeah, a little bit, yes.
Well, but keep, keep, keep in mind, the reason why we're not doing it right now was suspended through the emergency local action. It wasn't a council action.
Yeah.
It was, it was due to the pandemic. So, yeah, I'm sure we can rescind that part of our emergency local action to reinstate the public forum. It's just a matter of what, you know, what format we do with it.
And how the public forum was originally established, I don't know. We'd have to look at that. It was not established by ordinance. Uh, it may have been established by resolution, but, uh, I'm sure that goes back quite a number of years. It used to be that the public forum was held at the last of the meeting. It was changed to the first of the meeting. Uh, so like you say, it has been an evolutionary process. But, uh, when it was originally created or how it's created, we don't have that information right now.
Well, let me ask, if someone wants to make a motion. Is there any interest in, in, uh, reinstating the, the public forum?
I'll make a motion to resume public forum virtually.
Is there a second to that motion? I will second that motion. Discussion.
Question though, is this going to be every council meeting or is it going to be like the fourth one on a monthly, once a month?
I, 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 I interpreted and I accepted it, uh, as if we were reinstating it. And so we were doing it before every council, regular council.
And I think it's as needed because like everybody has already said, we don't have that many. Um, I don't, I, I probably don't even expect maybe one person or, or two in a month's time. I don't, we might not get any. I just think for our publics, uh, for it to be an option. Because like, uh, Tim said, some people prefer person to person. Other people want to be heard by everybody. So, you know, I think it's a personal preference for our residents. And I think we should, uh, try to accommodate all of our residents.
One, one other question too is when we had the public forum previously before the suspension, was we stated that we weren't going to hear any comments that weren't new material. So if we follow the process for somebody calls in to get on, uh, what latitude or direction do you want to give staff is determining what's new material or what's been repeated numerous times?
My personal opinion is if it's not resolved, it's, it's, it can be brought up or if it's, um, new to the situation. For instance, if it's somebody who's complaining about, um, a noisy neighbor and because maybe it's a, they're four wheeling or something over and over. And then the next time they come back and say, well, my neighbor's being noisy with music this time. So, you know, I think we've got to play it by ear on that one. I don't think we can just make a flat out ruling.
Yeah, I, I think if, if, well, one, if we know the subject which we've always asked for, that, you know, we can make that determination, you know, at the public forum as well.
So that, that begs a question for me, which is, let's say that someone, uh, asked to be on the public forum and it's determined that, you know, it falls in that category of, um, this is really an item that council feels, um, has been a resolved issue. Because it's been, you know, brought up multiple times before and, you know, there may not be anything new on that particular topic. Number one is if, if, if we say, okay, we're, we're, we're not going to have that particular person speak, do we mention that, you know, at the beginning of the work meeting that that person requested it and we turned it down for the reasons stated? Or are we just not going to mention it? I mean, I guess my feeling is if somebody's going to request it and, and we have a reason to say, hey, you know, this, this is, this is a topic that, you know, we feel has been resolved, we still have to make some kind of a comment that someone requested that particular item to be discussed. And my other quest, my other, uh, comment is, um, and I'm sorry if you wanted to jump in on that particular piece of it. But, uh, my other question is, let's say that, you know, we've got fifteen minutes. So we've got three minutes per person. You know, so that you, we're, we're talking what, you know, uh, five people, um, that could do it. What if we get a list that's, that's greater than that? Number one, can we move, um, you know, the meeting to earlier in that day because we have a longer list than what we can get through in the fifteen minutes? Or is that, you know, the, the start time that, that we stated, you know, um, in the newspapers as a notification that that's when it was going to start. So we have to start at that time. And if that's the case, do we say, well, I'm sorry, but, you know, the fifteen minutes has already been allocated. If you want to speak, you'll have to wait until the next meeting. So I think those are three things that I think, you know, need to be addressed if we're going to go forward with the public forum. Thanks.
I'll take a crack first. I, I, I don't think it's fair to let staff make that determination whether something should not be on public forum or not. I think, like I said, if, 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 you know, the topic is, is, is stated by the, the resident ahead of time, staff can, can advise maybe of what to expect. If, if staff thinks that, uh, you know, it's a topic that's already been, um, discussed and decided on and just let them know. But I, to me, it's, it's, I don't think it's fair for staff to do that and, and not fair for the resident as well. So, um, and then the second part was in terms of timing. Well, it's one thing we'll know by folks signing up by Thursday. You know, if we have two people or twenty people, we'll be able to accommodate that. So I think the question is, and this is private for us, is it's considered a public meeting, so we, so we do need to advertise it. And if we, we can't change the time then, once we set a time, that's correct.
I would agree, uh, Mayor and members of council, the, the time, the time is the time. It's, it's set and this would constitute a meeting of the city council. So it doesn't, it does have to be noticed. So we can't adjust the start time based on the number of people who want to participate. Um, if there's a concern about over participating, um, I, I might suggest shortening the, um, the speaking time from three minutes, um, which it currently is.
And that's something we can decide upon at the meeting if, if we have more people.
Correct.
Yeah, my tip, my suggestion, um, would be for decreasing the time. But if by some chance there's twenty people, I wouldn't see any reason why, um, some of them couldn't be rescheduled to the next meeting. Because that, I, I don't anticipate that, but if it should happen, I, I think that, um, if it's not a pressing issue and somebody can go to the next meeting, I think that we could, staff could easily just say, we'll put you on first for the next meeting.
Or again, I, I, I would just have staff let them know that there's, that there's, there's a chance that they may not get to it rather, rather than reschedule. I mean, I think we can decide that.
Mayor Ross. I don't disagree either with what Suzanne said about, you know, moving people to the next meeting. But I also think that it should be our policy that we, if we have multiple people requesting, you know, the same item, that, you know, I don't know, that maybe possibly we should be, you know, having them get together and decide on a spokesman. But maybe that's not going to work because maybe you feel that everyone should have their, their voice heard on each particular topic.
Well, and that's something that we could do, you know, if we have the list. Let, assuming it's a lot of people, you know, we know what they want to talk about. If there's six people who want to talk about, you know, issue A, and one person wants to talk about a totally different issue, then we just manage it that way, you know? And, uh, I, I, I think we've had to do this before when we had to lie too. Uh, so I don't think we have to try to, you know, plan for every contingency at this point.
Mayor Ross, I need to make an announcement. The time for this meeting was set for three hours and fifteen minutes. And this meeting will stop recording at ten o'clock. We have two other items left to discuss.
Okay, is there, uh, any other discussion on this?
Clarification, please. The way the current open for, the public forum is somebody gets up and has three minutes to talk. It's not a problem solving session. And I believe you ask, is it, is this anything that's on the current agenda? If it is, then they don't talk. So what we're talking, if this is the current public forum, somebody will get up, make comments, and then they're done. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that part of it hasn't changed.
And if it's on the agenda, it doesn't, doesn't even start.
That's right. That's, that's part of our policy on it.
Okay, just so we're all clear, because I, I get the feeling that there's some problem solving sessions in, in what, in people's minds.
I got, I got one, one question. Can, can we just limit this to the people of city of East Bethel? I mean, we don't have to open this up to other people. We can leave, can we leave it just with our city residents? You know, if something comes up, we've, we've had issues in the past where people have come from different cities. You know, that's a fact. So, I mean, can we just limit this to people of city, for the city of East Bethel?
Well, I understand what you're talking about, Tim, but, um, we've also had, you know, various groups that come in and want to speak to us real quick. You know, from the county or, you know, stepping stone came in once, things like that. And they're not necessarily East Bethel residents either. But to the question, Chris, can you comment?
Um, thank you, um, Mayor Boss, Councilmember Harrington. Um, I, I would say no, um, simply because, um, you know, for example, if somebody wanted to organize a protest or something along those lines at a city park, uh, we couldn't restrict just the city park to city residents. So if the, the forum's open to the public, it's, it's generally open to everybody.
Thank you.
Was there any other question? Discussion. Hey, then to the motion to reinstate, uh, public forum virtually and not broadcast. Mr. Nelson, could you take a little call vote, please?
Councilmember Urkel.
Hi.
Councilmember Harrington.
Hi.
Councilmember Ronny.
Hi.
Councilmember Pleasance.
Hi.
Mayor Boss.
Hi. So if that motion passes, um, Jack, assume we'll be able to get this set up for our next regular council meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Item seventeen three, twenty twenty town fall town hall meeting. Uh, pursuant to President Trump's proclamation that the COVID nineteen pandemic is a national emergency, a limit on the size of gathering along with the shelter in place order was issued through April thirtieth, twenty twenty. State of Minnesota extended their emergency declaration, which addressed shelter in place requirements through May fourth, twenty twenty. Subsequent social distancing, face covering and restrictions on the size of public gathering requirements have imposed guidelines that continue to limit the city's ability to host gatherings of more than twenty-five persons in city hall or fifty persons in the senior center. These numbers assume a static seating arrangement with little or no circulation of the attendees. Due to the requirements of the governor's executive orders related to COVID nineteen, the format of the town hall meeting does not lend itself to a live assembly or a remote attendance event. City council has requested to consider canceling the town, fall town hall event for twenty twenty.
My thoughts are we don't usually get more than ten or fifteen people that show up to these. Now with it being an election, we might get more, but we could limit it to people and keeping them six feet apart and, um, even having two tables in between so, a person. So, and having everybody wear masks. I mean, everybody voted, people go into Walmart every day and they're crossing people in the aisle, standing in lines. And even though they have those circles that are six feet apart, people are closer, they're one shopping cart apart. I, I really don't see why we shouldn't have it, honestly. That's my thoughts.
Jack, how many people can we actually get into council chambers?
The, 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 the fire rating capacity is a hundred occupancy in council chambers and two forty in the senior center.
But I mean, with social distancing.
Twenty-one, twenty-one people.
Twenty-one, and more than half of that would be staff.
Correct.
Where I'm getting at Suzanne is, is I think every single town hall we've had, it has at least had enough people that would make it difficult to have it inside.
What if we just had it in the scene, uh, the portion in the senior center? And with all of us behind tables where they can talk to us, you know, individually if they want to and not in the chambers? That's, I guess, I, I totally spaced the whole chamber part, but I was thinking of the senior center part and people just walking around and, you know, having any tables of, uh, community involvement, you know, the community type tables, the fire department and stuff. Just that part of it.
I think even with that, we'd have a tough time distancing because there's going to be twenty-some people in there. I, I, you know, I'm wondering, we talked about this before we canceled the spring column meeting too. Is, is, is there a way to do it virtually? You know, Suzanne, you mentioned you've been on large Zoom calls. I was, I was observing the, the school district had an emergency meeting a week ago that was open to the public. And, and that seemed to go okay, but I, I don't know if it, I don't know if it would, uh, you know, kind of satisfy what, why we do the town hall meetings. It's not, it's not just a means of communications, it means that residents get together too, so. Well, I, I, I guess I, I'm, I'm of the opinion that, you know, just out of necessity and everything we're having to do that, I don't see a way we can do it in person. And I think it's probably impractical to do it virtually.
Well, virtually would be actually quite easy if everybody wanted to come up and instead of talking, uh, they type their questions in chat and we could respond to each one individually if we had a response to it. Or if it was directed at a particular person, virtually would be very easy. Oh, and those chats can be saved too. So we can look, go back and look at them and see who, who asked them. And we were able to go meet with that person, you know, individually if their, um, concern wasn't answered.
Um, I, I wouldn't mind trying to, to do it virtually, but I, I'm just, I mean, I, I, I don't think we'll be losing that much by, um, just putting this one on hold and, and maybe revisit this. by just putting this one on hold and, and maybe revisit this in the spring. So I'm gonna make the motion to say that I, I would like to cancel the fall town hall meeting for this fall and then revisit this in the spring.
I'll second.
And more for the second discussion. Jack, we, we've already missed the newsletter deadline, correct?
That's correct.
So, how was, was this presented in the newsletter at all about town hall meeting?
To my knowledge, I don't think it's even mentioned in the newsletter.
Okay, so we're, we would have a difficult time advertising when this is occurring. Yeah, I, I tend to agree that we're gonna need to. And again, just emphasize, you know, if folks want to reach their council members that were reachable in this time. Is there any other discussion? Hey, hearing none, Mr. Nelson, can you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Urkel.
I vote nay to canceling the town hall meeting.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Pleasance.
Aye.
Mayor Boss.
Aye. That motion passes, so we will be canceling our fall hall meeting for sure.
Item 7G4, care business relief grant program. I'm gonna kind of give the short version of the staff report on this. At our work meeting on September the 2nd, Jakell Hider was the In Oak County Regional Economic Development, was present and gave us some outlines on the operation of how to use CARES funds for business grant relief. I thought she gave a very good presentation. We had an outline and a format in there for establishing that, which complied fairly well with what they recommended. In your packet, we're recommending that council consider approval of the county's temporary program format. The questions that we would have to answer is, number one, how much funds do we have? We have approximately $180,000 to allocate for this. Number two, do we want to do it for nonprofits or, and home occupations? And if we do, how much do we cap these at, and how we allocate the formula for distribution of funds? So with that, I'll be open for questions on anybody that has anything. If there isn't, we'll make a recommendation upon the conclusion of our discussion for a motion.
I just had a question. Do we have nonprofits registered in the city?
We do. Any 501(c)(3) is a nonprofit and is eligible. 501(c)(19)'s are eligible. Those are veterans organizations, those are listed in our program format for those that can be approved for eligibility. Some places are doing 501(c)(6)'s, which are like chambers of commerce. I don't know that we want to include those in there or not. But churches are eligible, Canby Hills is eligible, NACE is eligible, Star Academy in the north is eligible. But there are several nonprofits that wouldn't be eligible for those funds. The other thing we need to do is consider, like you said, we need to consider whether we're gonna include home occupations. One thing to note about home occupations in East Bethel is currently we only have eight home occupations that have existing IUPs. The last time we sent notices out was in June of 2019 for renewals. We've had no renewals. So one of the conditions that we could require if it's a home occupation is they actually possess the current valid IUP. That could be a condition for application for home occupations. But we do necessarily want to set up this for businesses that have storefront locations, and then we have to decide if we want to include nonprofits or home occupation.
I think we should, anybody that can justify a need for it, and I don't think an IUP should be a requirement because I know a couple of businesses that one person does, has been sewing and selling masks out of her house and just dropping them off at hospitals or selling them to people in hospitals, and it's, and I know they don't have an IUP. So I don't think, I don't think that person needs this money, but I just know of businesses like that, that an IUP wouldn't even be necessary. It doesn't make any sense for them to have an IUP. So I don't think an IUP should be a requirement.
We, we are not supposed to be arbitrary or capricious in our action. We have to be able to explain what we do, why we did it, and how. If, if somebody doesn't have some kind of legal recognition to entitlement for this money, I, I don't, I don't think there's any way for us to touch it.
Yeah, I think, I think from an audit standpoint, this is, you know, we're probably gonna get in trouble if we don't make sure these are legitimate businesses. And that's one way to do it.
I don't disagree with that at all. And so therefore, I will make a motion to go ahead and have the CARES business grant program by the city open to businesses, nonprofits that are eligible, and businesses, home-based businesses that are, have an IUP and are recognized by the, by the city.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it. Jack, did you get where you need to be? Yes.
Good question.
Jack, how about, how about besides IUP, how about up on, they're up on their taxes and they have a CUP? Or make sure they don't have any outstanding debt?
Yeah, CUPs wouldn't factor in, but that's listed in those program descriptions. They'd have to be current on their taxes, current on any utility connection requirements, and not have any outstanding code compliance issues.
So would his amendment, would his motion be good, or do you need a amended motion?
No, that, that's, that's good. I think it was outlined that we had to have the IUP. Those other items are what's presented in your packet, and that's what we'd be voting on would be the grant program outline. There's also one in there for nonprofits. We would just add the home occupations under the existing business. We have two grant program outlines for businesses, which include storefront and home occupations. Then we'd also have the one for nonprofits, which is listed in your packet, which outlines their eligibility criteria.
Okay, because I'm concerned like Steve, because I, I know they're gonna audit. It's, it's just gonna be a matter of time.
Yeah, and, and, and we do have to make sure that we do this properly. What we would do, we would utilize a third party to actually, actually submit and rate and review the applications, determine who met the eligibility requirements. So it's not the city that's making that determination. That's an eligible cost and it's factored in to the budget for this program.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Nelson, can you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Urkel.
I vote aye, except I disagree with the IUP requirement.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Pleasance.
Aye.
Mayor Boss.
Aye. And that motion passes.
You got two minutes left, Jack, one and a half. Oh, that concludes our issues, or our staff report items, or our department reports. I do have one staff report item to mention. Mayor Boss and I attended a virtual meeting today with the In Oak County Transportation Board. And the request that we made initially to them for no parking zones extension on Viking Boulevard was brought up today. And for the most part, it was approved. It was modified somewhat for the fact that no parking on the south side of Viking Boulevard, Central Queen Street, that drive and Isetta Street will be controlled by four new right turn lanes, one at Breezy Point Drive, one at the location of the Ork's Camp ground, one at Thievin Boulevard, and one at Isetta Street. So this addresses the four residential properties that are hugely impacted by no parking in front of their residents. So that was approved, and the county will actually be spending some dollars to get this done. But it probably won't be finished or go into effect until next year. We thought that was very good on their part because they did not approve it at the first meeting. We came back with these modifications and they approved it today. That's all I have.